We're calling the Minor Site Plan and Subdivision Committee of the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills together. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at SEC of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. If you could call the roll, please.
Mr. O'Perowick.
Here.
Ms. Hernandez.
Here.
Mr. Mealy.
Here.
Ms. Veely.
Here.
Chairman Dinsmore.
Here.
We also have Mrs. Favate.
Here.
Mr. Carlson.
Here.
And Mr. Canjiano.
Here.
Okay, if we could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We have one item on the agenda tonight, and that is application number 20:501, Allison Perez, 115 Hamburg Road, block 239, lots, lot four, minor subdivision. If you could, please come up.
Eric, please. Good evening, members of the board. Todd Fenchler of Decker &amp; Fenchler, Parsippany, representing Allison Perez. Her husband, the builder, is, I guess, sitting in the same chair as she is. Maybe he's first.
All right, so what are you coming before us here tonight for?
Should I swear your, if they're gonna...
I just swear that most of them.
Yes, we're coming here...
No, they want to swear.
I just want to swear your votes, that way we don't got to...
Oh, you want to swear?
Raise your right hands, please. You swear the testimony you're about to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Members of the board, we're here for a minor subdivision for 115 Hamburg Road in Parsippany.
All right. Do you have some testimony that would make our job easier to determine the appropriate action?
Sure. I'd like to pull Carlos Perez, the husband of the occupant, a licensed builder, by mic. Mr. Perez, could you describe the project that proposed development? What is being proposed?
We'd like to, you know, subdivide the lot into two pieces. One is eighty by a hundred, and the other piece is sixty by a hundred. And like to build two new homes.
All right. Ms. Favate, are there certain items that we need to...
Sure, Mr. Chairman. We had recommended a waiver on the DEP requirement. There's no, there are no wetlands on the property. We also recommended a waiver on the scale of the map. Because of the minor nature, there's enough detail, despite it not being drawn to scale, there's enough detail for the board to understand really what was happening, hopefully. Location of natural features, there are really none on site. It's fully developed with an existing home. So those are the three waivers. Other items we suggested would be addressed in testimony. For example, you know, some of the zoning compliance, question of grading utilities and drainage, and landscaping and sort of construction details, all we suggest it could be addressed in testimony.
Sure. I'll go through the items on the checklist.
Just a moment. Do I hear a motion to approve the waivers recommended by our planner?
Motion to accept.
Second. Ms. Hernandez.
All right. Can we do this by a rule?
Yes.
We can do this by voice vote?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we move along. All right, now you have the letter from Ms. Favate in front of you, and you can address the different items that require testimony.
I will, sir. Thank you. Mr. Perez, I'd like to go through some items on the checklist here. Are you aware of any wetlands or...
I think we have any.
Yes, that's right here, including wetlands. Are you aware of any restrictions that would prevent the property being built upon, including natural features, woodland, streams, wetlands, flood hazard, any of those items?
I'm not aware of any of those items.
The, can you discuss the lot widths? Have they, have they been corrected?
Yes, the lot width of the zoning requirements.
Are you aware, is it going to be any regrading of the property as part of the construction process?
There's always regrading to, you know, when you're doing these projects. And the engineer has everything, the proposed and, you know, the existing grades and the proposed grades, which I have, you know, if it was any of the board...
Would you speak up, please?
Speak up.
Thank you.
If I could actually go back to the question on the lot widths, there was a question of whether the numbers on the plans or the zoning table were correct. So whichever is correct, I just wanted to get clarification.
The what?
The level.
Yeah, the lot width was always, you know, we submitted with the lot, one lot is eighty-one feet by a hundred feet deep. The over line is sixty feet by a hundred feet. Number one oh nine Hamburg on the paper, that's sixty by a hundred, and the longest ninety-nine Hamburg is eighty by a hundred.
Okay, so what's actually on the plan is correct because the table says, proposed lot 402, the width would be seventy-nine point oh seven. Whereas, whereas on the plan, I believe that lot is eighty-one point one, excuse me, eighty-one point four?
Yeah, that's what I think, eighty-one.
Okay. And also the columns on the zoning table look like they're flipped. So whenever we get to a final plan, that should be corrected.
I don't know why that number is there.
Okay.
But that, I mean, that's not the right number.
I didn't think so. I thought what was drawn was probably correct, but just take a look at the zoning table.
Right, but first one in the beginning was always what is on the draw.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Perez, utility connections, do you foresee any issue with utility connections? Drainage, are there plans for drainage? Have you submitted part of the plans?
Everything drains, storm drains, everything is connected on the ground.
I just wanted to comment, this application is for a minor sub, the correct process would be when the full grading plan and house plan is submitted, should be submitted to the engineering, township engineer for review. That's outside of my purview to be reviewing the lot grading plan. So there's a secondary step. Should you be deemed approved tonight, then you would have to submit your updated plans for building permits and engineering review for grading and the like.
Mr. Perez, the installation of fences, driveways, sidewalks, is that part of the plans as well?
Yes.
Okay, so that's all included?
It's in the plot plan.
Landscaping, is there, has that been submitted yet, or is that late?
Yeah, that's on the plot plan.
And future driveway location, has that been submitted as well?
Yes.
Have you submitted something since, more recently, since the plan I'm looking at, which is November fifteenth?
Yes.
I gave it to you. Oh, this is what's on my desk.
It looks like we've submitted the nineteenth of this month, though. We haven't had a chance to review these yet.
I got it, I got it. Thank you. Sorry, I didn't realize that was different than what I had. So none of us have seen this revised plan? And just for the record, it looks like on the latest plan, the zoning table's been corrected. So that explains some of the confusion. Thank you. Okay. The width of the proposed driveways? Do you have that handy?
Unfortunately, I have not happy with...
Okay, I think it just has to be twenty-four feet or less.
Yeah.
Okay, so you'll just be, you'll be compliant?
Yeah.
Okay.
One's fourteen and one's twenty-one.
Let's put it here, they've got a house there, a stair, driveways are both on Hamburg Road.
Oh, all the details, I see it.
And there's the boundary, because they're several feet off of the road.
Did you indicate whether there were any protective covenants or deed restrictions that you're aware of? Okay. And that covered everything, that was the one minor item. I assume the application is complete, or would follow everybody being told the SACS department is fine and things like that?
Susan, the only thing that I can't calculate quickly is deck percentage. Deck percentage can only be four percent. So I didn't see this plan until just now, just to make sure that the deck isn't over four percent.
Okay.
Well, we're not approving the plans for the houses, we're approving simply the...
No, but I like them to know.
Correct.
So that, so that if you wanted that big deck, you might want to make it a variance and get it, you know, and go to the, versus waiting a couple months and coming to zoning, and then I'm the bad guy that says, oh, by the way, you can't have that deck that the board looked at. Do you know what I mean? So instead of, people think that when the board approved the plan, everything's good. But if they come to zoning and the deck is over four percent, then I tell them, no.
But if we were to have a C variance at this time, wouldn't we be moving it up to the full, full board? So all we're proving at this point...
No, I know, I just wanted to be able to tell them, so he knows.
At the depth of the country, how long is zoning a district?
Make it smaller?
Yes.
Okay, we can work on that later then.
Okay.
Counselor, is this your case? You are trying to get us to approve a subdivision that is two conforming lots being made out of one?
That's correct, that's correct, sir.
Okay. Is there any questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Perowick.
On the driveways, in the report here, it says that the location of the proposed driveways is required to confirm appropriate site distance from the intersection. Shouldn't we have that as a, an approval?
We're only, we're only approving the splitting of the lot. The engineering and the site plan will all be determined by our professionals later, when they, when they have the actual site plan in front of them.
So this will come up again, then?
It may.
Yeah, and just to look at it, I mean, what they've presented, and Andrew could chime in as well, it looks like you could get a driveway far enough away.
Yeah, I mean, it's the first lot, it's the one that you'd be concerned about, lot 401, it's a corner lot, but they have it as far away from the corner as possible, so...
As you really can, yeah.
Okay. Good enough, thank you.
Well, good point to raise. Any other questions by members of the... Vincent, do you have another?
No, no, Mr. Chairman.
R.K., our planner, Ms. Favate, do you have anything else that you need to...
I think that does it.
Okay, Mr. Canjiano, do you have any of the...
No comment, just that the comments, the housekeeping comments on the survey, I haven't reviewed this one that just came in yet. I don't know if it's addressed it yet, but if it didn't address it, we'll re-comment.
Well, all we're giving them is the split in the property.
Correct, correct. I just had a few housekeeping items on that, that the lot plan had to be changed and just graphics to have it show a little bit clearer, and just a few housekeeping items, but I'm satisfied that there's no issues, it's just a matter of the revised plan having a few more housekeeping items for graphics.
Mr. Carlson, yep. Mr. Carlson, do we have what we need here?
Well, I actually have a, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question that, I'm just looking at the architectural elevations, and are these just sort of sample elevations? Okay, because they're for a different property, but I'm assuming they're in, they're in the architects'.
Yes.
Okay, because, because, I guess one question I have on lot 401 is the driveway opens onto Hamburg, so, but the house faces Everett.
Yes.
So the, so the actual elevation will be a little bit different because you'd be coming in the driveway on the side, into the garage from the side, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Fine. I'm just getting a little bit confused, looking at the, but it's fine.
Okay.
We're not approving the houses, as you said.
Right.
And I'm not approving the houses.
Mr. Carlson, you have anything else to...
No, I have nothing.
Are there any members of the public who have any questions or thoughts on this subject? Hearing and seeing none? Anything else from any members of the board? That is, I assume, your entire case, sir?
It is, yes, sir.
All right.
Chairman, I'm making a motion.
Wait, let me close, close the public portion of this. Do I hear a motion to approve the application as presented?
Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve the application of Allison Perez, 115 Hamburg Road, block 239, lot four, application number 20:501, minor subdivision.
Second. If you would call the roll, please.
Mr. O'Perowick.
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Mealy.
Yes.
Ms. Veely.
Yes.
Chairman Dinsmore.
Yes. And the result is the granting of the subdivision, and I guess we'll go through the usual bureaucratic requirements. And when you finally want to submit the plans for the actual site, you have to go through the normal routines of that, too.
Thank you very much. Counsel, please make sure I see the subdivision deed before it's recorded.
I will. Members of the board, thank you.
Yep. Is there anything else to come before this board at any time? Any members of the public that have something that they need to bring before the minor site plan, because I didn't ask that before? Hearing and seeing none, a motion to adjourn is in order.
Okay.
All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
All right. We took a few minutes longer than you might have expected.
The Township of Parsippany Planning Board, today is Monday, February 24th, 2020, 7:30 PM. Announcement of this meeting has been made with adequate notice, and is given that being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at SEC of the New Jersey State Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, would you please do the roll?
Mr. O'Perowick.
Here.
Councilman Di Piero.
Here.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Here.
Mr. Frigiri.
Here.
Ms. Hernandez.
Here.
Mr. Mendel.
Here.
Mr. Mealy.
Here.
Mr. Patel.
Yes.
Ms. Veely.
Here.
Chairman Von Aken.
Here.
We also have present tonight our board planner, Ms. Favate.
Here.
Our board attorney, Mr. Carlson.
Here.
And our board engineer, Mr. Canjiano.
Here.
Would everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, looks like we had some minutes from our past meetings that need approval. Should we go through these one by one, or can we have them approved together? That's a lot.
The problem is only those present can vote on them, so I think we're going to have to do them one by one, Nora?
Probably, unless there's a particular, any of them that someone does not want to approve them, do it kind of backwards.
I suppose so, yeah. Are there any, does anyone have any comments on the minutes, or are there any that you'd like taken off the consent agenda? I guess we can, I guess we can vote them on consent. I'll note, however, we skipped the resolution for water review investors, we'll do that at our next meeting.
That's good.
So I guess the way we would do that is, do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
A motion to approve the minutes of the following meetings, August 19th, September 9th, September 23rd, October 7th, October 21st, November 4th, and November 18th, all in 2019.
I believe the last one was November 29th.
Oh, I'm sorry, it says 18th on here.
Yeah.
Corrected?
I'll adjust.
Which is correct.
Twenty-seven.
I don't have my investor with me.
Do we have the correct date, then? Just...
I don't, I don't have one.
Eighteen? Okay. All right. Do we have a second of that motion?
I'll second, Hernandez.
Please call the roll.
Mr. O'Perowick.
Yes.
Councilman Di Piero.
Abstain on October 7th, yes on all the rest.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Abstain on the September 23rd and November 4th, but yes on the rest.
Mr. Frigiri.
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez.
I abstain on August 19th, 2019, and yes for the rest.
Mr. Mendel.
Abstain on October 21st, yes on the rest.
Mr. Mealy.
Yes on all of them.
Mr. Patel.
Yes.
Ms. Veely.
Yes, except for September 9th, October 7th, and November 4th.
Chairman Von Aken.
Yes, abstain on October 7th and November 4th.
Very good.
All right. First item on the agenda, application number 19:518, Federal Realty, 1123 Route 46, Block 729, Lot 7. Amended preliminary and final major site plan with C variance. Sir?
Yeah, yes, I've never used it myself.
Yeah, the lighting.
The lights might be washing it out.
Yeah, I think it's turning on right now.
Yeah.
It takes a few moments to... Voila.
Are we not using that? Put all the lights back on?
Yeah, I guess so. It said it wasn't connected, even though it seems to be, so I have hard copies I can hand back to the board. Okay. Thank you.
Good job.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Luke Pontier of the law firm, Day Pitney. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Federal Realty.
Excuse me here. My recently utilized Day Pitney and my daughter, my daughter-in-law works for Day Pitney. I'm going to go off here and play with my smartphone.
We'll see you in a few minutes.
I'm here on behalf of Federal Realty Investment Trust tonight. The applicant is the owner of property located at 1123 Route 46, which is designated on the township tax map as block 729, lot 7, and the property is commonly referred to as the Troy Hills Shopping Center. The property is approximately 19.8 acres and is located in the B1 zoning district, where shopping centers are a conditional use. Tonight, the applicant is seeking amended preliminary and final site plan approval along with bulk variance relief to install additional signage within the shopping center. The applicant has received several approvals from this board over the past few years, most recently being a minor site plan approval on March 26th of 2018 to perform facade renovations, which if you've been by the property lately, have been completed. The applicant is now proposing additional signage on the property to finalize the rehabilitation of the shopping center, and the signage proposed includes a total of 12 under canopy hanging signs, one for each of the existing building tenants, eight graphic wall panel signs along the north and east building facades, which is along the existing Michael's store, and one internally lit welcome wall sign on the northeastern corner of the building, also on the existing Michael's facade. Before I get into the meat of the application, the variance is being sought tonight, the applicant did have several waiver requests. I'm not sure if the board planner would like to go through those before we get into it.
Sure. Go ahead.
Sure, there were a number of, either requested or we recommend waivers for this application, given that there's no actual new construction proposed, there's no, there's no changes to the buildings themselves. So the first waiver is a DEP letter of interpretation on wetlands, there are no DEP regulated wetlands on the property, so we recommended that waiver. The applicant had asked for a waiver on the key map because of the minor nature of the application, and there's really no disturbance or minimal disturbance proposed, we concurred and recommended that waiver. Then there's a series of waivers that are checklist items that are related to actual construction or site work, so there's easements, natural features, topographic contours, spot elevations, floor plans, utilities, and storm drainage, none of those are proposed to change, so we recommended all of those waivers. And similarly, there are checklist items on landscaping and solid waste containers, the usage of non-residential buildings, construction, and then a traffic study or environmental assessment study, none of those are necessary in this case because of the nature of the application, and you all just saw them a couple years ago, where you saw all that information. And then the final set of waivers are, relate to the fact that it's a final, it's a requested final and preliminary site plan and subdivision application, or site plan application, as you typically see here, most applicants request for the same, you know, the preliminary and final will be done at the same time, so you don't need the additional conditions of the final major site plan, so we recommended those waivers as well. And then there's a series of waivers on the C variance application, which I've already gone through, they're repetitive from the other checklist. So in short, because there's no... So in short, because there's no proposed construction on the buildings themselves, building itself, we recommend all of those waivers.
All right. Any comments or concerns from the board about the recommended waivers? Then I'll accept the motion to accept the waivers.
Motion to accept.
All right. Mr. Perelik, second?
Second, Mendel.
All right. Second, Mendel. Nora, can you call the roll? All in favor? Okay. Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, very good. That sounds like everybody.
You should still say oppose.
Thank you. Okay. Very good. Waivers are accepted.
Great, thank you. As part of this amended site plan application, the applicant is requesting the following variances from the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills Code, Section 430-287A. That is a variance to permit building signs on side walls where building signs are permitted only on the front wall. A variance to permit a sign, a wall sign totaling approximately 209 square feet, and that's for the welcome sign, as a maximum sign area of 150 square feet is permitted. A variance for the number of building signs to permit one additional building sign for each tenant, plus the welcome sign and graphic panel signs, as only one building sign is permitted per tenant. And finally, a variance to permit hanging signs as such signs are not permitted within the B1 district. We did receive two review memorandums as part of this application, one from the board planner, which is dated December 17th, 2019, and one from the board engineer, which is dated January 27th of 2020. With me tonight, I have two witnesses, Andrew Vittaro, who is a representative of the property owner and applicant, and Tim Olson, who is a representative from the signed company. Without further ado, I will introduce Andrew Vittaro.
You raise your right hand, please. Do you swear the testimony you're about to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Would you state and spell your name for the record, please?
Andrew Vittaro.
Thank you. And can you please state the name and address of your employer?
I work for Federal Realty Investment Trust. Address is 50 East Woodrow, Woodrow, Pennsylvania. I'm a senior director of development for our region.
Yeah, and can you just go through your experience, please, both with the company and in development of shopping centers?
My undergraduate degree is in landfill.
Excuse me, if you just speak up.
My graduate degree is in finance. I've worked in the development industry for 30-plus years. I've been with Federal for maybe three and a half, four years. We started the project up here in Parsippany maybe two years ago, and we're here really to sort of finish it off and make it look the way we really wanted it to look.
Great. And now I'm gonna introduce as Exhibit A1 an aerial photograph of the site.
There should be one for each. Can I get here?
And I'll hold a minute for everyone to get a copy in front of them. And Mr. Vittaro, can you please describe the location of the property for the board?
Certainly. I would imagine everyone's like fairly familiar. It's on 46 at South Beverwick. At one end of the property is Michaels, at the other end of the property is Target. It currently has two pylon signs, one out on 46 at the, basically, the sort of the center line of the property line, lot 46. Has another pylon sign on South Beverwick that is parallel to South Beverwick. It is pretty much surrounded by commercial space. There are retail centers across the street. I-80 parallels the back of the center, and across South Beverwick is Park and Ride. So that's sort of the context of the shopping center itself. We've all probably seen how we renovated it over the last few years. And, you know, with our tenants, we are, we're here to ask for some, you know, additional signage for identification, going to get into the various.
In one second. And so just to confirm one last thing about the location of the property and looking at the aerial, are there any residential uses directly adjacent to the site?
No, none.
And now I'd like to introduce Exhibit A2. Each of you do have a copy of this in your package. It is the leasing plan, which is, lists all of the tenants on the site, as well as highlights where the signage is proposed. And Mr. Vittaro, can you please describe the proposed signage?
There are three types of signs. The first one, there are 12 panel signs, are basically under, we call them under canopy signs. We use them in pretty much all of our, most of our strip shops as well. They are perpendicular to the storefront of each tenant. Yet the second sign is on the South Beverwick entrance. There is a blank wall on the side of the Michaels. And there's really, when you come in off of South Beverwick, there really is no identification as to what you're arriving to. So that's the second sign, which basically says, "Welcome to Troy Hills Shopping Center." And then the third sign, which in my mind is really just graphics. There, as you come off of South Beverwick, and you come into the shopping center, and you sort of bear a right to come around to the front of Michaels, there are just huge blank walls. So what we're proposing, I think, are eight or 10
Eight.
graphic panels that would be on these blank, epist concrete walls that would really, there really, there's no, there's no text. They're just graphics to just be more aesthetically pleasing and to complement the balance of the architecture that we've done to around the balance of the center.
And so let's, we'll go through each of the types of proposed signs as you just described, starting with the hanging under canopy signs. Can you please describe for the board the purpose of those signs?
Well, there really are two purposes and another reason. One is, we do them at most of our retail centers because it's something that the tenants like to have. But the two main reasons are, when someone walks out of, let's just take Smash Burger for an example, and they want to go to another tenant, once they're in the canopy area in the sidewalk, which is protected from potential traffic, they can look straight down the sidewalk and they can see where the other tenants are. It's almost exactly what you have out here in your hallway, where you look down the hallway and you can see which room is which by the various, the blade signs that you have. It basically is the exact same function. And what it also does in a retail environment, it keeps people from having to walk out into the parking lot to see, oh, where is Sports Cooks? Where is Chipotle? So it keeps people in a safe zone. They don't have to walk out into the drive aisle to be able to understand where the next tenant is.
And so just to confirm, there's nothing currently that would enable a customer walking under the canopy to identify the store that's three stores down?
Nothing else.
Okay, so this would help for identification purposes, as well as, you said, the kind of the free flow of traffic throughout the parking lot? And now, moving on to the welcome sign, can you please describe the purpose for that sign?
The purpose is that on South Beverwick, when you come off of E, you really, and you look to the left, you really can't tell that it's a retail center. You can tell it's a retail center, but you don't know really what it is. We're not really asking, we're not asking to put tenant names on there. We just want to identify the center itself.
Great. And would you also say that the sign is aesthetically pleasing?
I think it's beautiful.
And would you say that it helps to tie the entire shopping center together?
It ties everything together. All the, you know, all the architectural from Target all the way down through Michaels and around is all been tied together and, you know, thanks to the graphic designers have put it as such, fulfilled its point of view, its aesthetic throughout. As well as the materials, we've added a lot of stone, a lot of wood, a lot of metal, a lot of steel. It was very meticulous, a lot of design, a lot of effort, there are meshes over some of the smaller tenants, so that entire aesthetic follows the whole way down through.
And I believe you touched on it briefly in your introduction, but the monument sign that is on South Beverwick, that's located at the intersection of South Beverwick and Route 46, correct?
Yes.
And it's parallel to South Beverwick?
As opposed to perpendicular, which are typical pylons. Like the one on Route 46 is perpendicular, has two sides. You see it from either direction.
So as you were saying, it's difficult coming off of I-80 or down South Beverwick for, to identify the shopping center currently?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And moving on to the eight graphic panels that you're proposing along the Michaels, can you please describe the purpose, purpose of those signs? I think you touched on it briefly already.
Yeah, it's really about the aesthetic. You know, we're one of the few companies publicly traded REIT that actually has a head of design in our office. We take all of our properties and we renovate them very seriously on the, on the aesthetic, the actual sort of making place. So if you're like in front of Smash Burger, you'll see that we've created an area for outdoor seating. If you're in front of, down from Chipotle, we've created these areas where you can actually sit. And these graphic panels really sort of tie that architecture the whole way down, the entire facade of the retail center.
Great.
So we just look at it as, you know, the icing on the cake here to make this thing look the way we really wanted it to look for the community.
And so kind of along those lines, would you say that the signage helps to create a unified design theme for the entire shopping center? I have no further questions for this witness, but I'd like to open to the board for questions.
Any members of the board with questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just to clarify, so if you are making the right-hand turn from South Beverwick Road headed south or, you know, into the, into the, that driveway there, you're, I'm trying, maybe it's just me, but you're not proposing to have anything there by the road that's substantial?
That's correct.
Okay.
It's on the wall of Michaels.
That's what I know. That's, I didn't know if there, I missed something else, because the visibility there is already difficult. There's cars that are creeping out into, into the southbound of South Beverwick Road as it is. So to have another sign, that would have been an issue. Okay, that's my question. Thank you.
So the monument side, sign will remain?
Yes.
Okay. And what about the Michaels sign? Is it gonna be part of this group?
They would have, Michaels would have under canopy signs, so they would have a sign right over their front door, basically.
Okay.
That is, I think, what is it called this? Because they don't have canopy. These are for the smaller tenants, between Dollar Tree and Chipotle, for those, all the small tenants under that canopy.
Okay.
The tenants are in the house.
Okay.
Yeah, the larger, quote-unquote, junior anchors, going to Dollar Tree or Michaels or Target, they have significant wall signage, so people really know where they are. It's really for the smaller.
Okay, and it's not necessary for Michaels because it's part of the monument sign?
Correct, yeah, they're already on both monuments, pylons, whatever you want to call them.
Ms. Veely?
What was the dimensions of the Welcome to Troy Hills, the large sign, length by width?
So the sign, the representative from the sign company will testify as to all the dimensions for the signage.
All right. Then are there any other questions for this witness? All right. Thank you. Any questions from the public for this witness? All right. Your excuse.
Sir, would you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear the testimony you're about to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Would you state and spell your name for the record, please?
Timothy Olson, O-L-S-E-N.
Back with the size here.
Yes. And Mr. Olson, can you please state the name and address of your employer for the record?
I work for Foreman Sign Company, 10447 Drummond Road, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania.
And your position with the employer?
I am the vice president of operations.
And is it accurate to say that Foreman Signs developed the sign package that's in front of the board today?
That's correct.
And can you describe your experience with the company and otherwise?
I have been with the company for eight years. I have been in the sign industry for 29 years. I handle day-to-day operations from start to finish.
Great. And Mr. Vittaro previously went through each of the proposed signs and the types of signs that are being proposed tonight, but can you please go into a bit more detail and provide the dimensions for each of the signs for the board?
The projecting signs that we're proposing will be 13 and 3/4 inches tall by 30 inches. And the 30 inches is off the wall. We are, I don't have the, I would say, the probably 26 inches actual size, but we have the area where we have to attach them to the facade.
We will go through, but if you could also touch on the height of the proposed hanging signs from the ground?
From the ground? They will be eight feet to the bottom. So it's enough that it's out of, out of headway, but it's aesthetically not to the point where it'd have to reach up to that.
Great. Yeah, and then if you could flip to the welcome sign and please describe the dimensions of that, and the total square footage of the sign as well.
The total square footage is 209 square feet. I'm not sure, and I should have caught this, I'm not sure if my designer put the overall height, but the overall length of the letters are 11 feet 5 inches. That will go on a back, if you, on this page here. Oh, I'm sorry.
So this is in your package. We can call this Exhibit A3, and this is the Welcome to Troy Hills color rendering?
For aesthetics, the black background will be the 209 square feet. The background does not illuminate. It just, what would you have with channel letters, if you have a lot of penetrations? Every letter will have maybe three to four penetrations into the building. From here, you would have one electric penetration, one electrical connection, and just maybe eight to 10 to hold the pantomime. So we wouldn't be, you know, Swiss cheesing part of my French wall. And, and when you have letters like that, again, it's aesthetically pleasing. It brings your eye to the sign. And that's more or less for daytime. You know, at night, obviously, it will be non-visible, and it gives a nice background for the letters to have the illumination.
And can you describe the illumination a bit? And I know there was a concern from the board engineer on whether or not that would be shielded from outside of the property.
Yeah, what we do is a normal letter like you see on most of the buildings, light through acrylic through the face. So if it's red, it lights red. These letters are fabricated out of aluminum. They will have a three-inch return, and they light backwards. So nothing will come through the front. We put, depending on townships, if people want brighter, we'll put a clear lens on the back. For these letters, we would put a white lens, so it acts as a diffuser, so it lets light through, but it's not to the point where it's overpowering bright. So you would get a nice, eye-pleasing glow which makes the letters light or whatnot.
And can you describe briefly the process of the installation of the signs for the board?
The hanging signs, we would just take a ladder, go up, and attach them to the facade. Done. This sign here, instead of taking pretty much a day to
Sorry, just, when you say this sign here, can you?
The Troy Hills, Welcome to Troy Hills sign, what we would do is we would put up a mounting bracket, put the panel on, attach it, and that's it. We would just tie the electric in and we would be in and out.
And now turning to the eight graphic panels, can you please go through the dimensions of those?
Nine, I'm thinking, nine foot seven by 15 foot. I'm blind, I'm a poor man.
Yeah, 15 six and nine seven.
Yeah, nine foot, nine foot seven by 15 foot six.
And so each is approximately 148.5 square feet, is that accurate? And can you briefly describe the installation process for those signs?
These would be a flexible material. These would be a flexible material, so we would, again, put a frame to give it a little bit of dimension. And these would be stretched with a clip system that pulls it kind of like a canvas frame. That's more or less what you would be looking at.
And there's, there's no lettering or logos proposed for that sign, correct?
No lettering, illumination.
Just a graphic panel?
Just a graphic. And the, the key is, you know, you could go and just paint the wall, but you want to just have a little bit of depth, just so everything, like I said, it just gives a nice, clean look and it gives, it's pleasing to the eye.
Thank you. And I have no further questions for this witness, but I'd like to open it up to the board for questions.
Do our professionals have any questions for this witness?
No, just, well, I do have one question. On the Welcome to Troy Hills sign, you had mentioned the overall square footage size of 209 for the whole panel, the black panel. Do you have a length and, height, height and width, length on that? And it's just a little confusing. On the color rendering, it appears that the, that bottom swish, whatever graphic on the bottom, that's, that's 137 inches, the 11' 5". It appears to be, that appears to be the same width as your black panel in the background, but on the prior sheet, if you looked at this one on the prior sheet, the footprint of that outline of that panel seems to be larger. Just if you can just clarify that.
Right. So the reason that this shows the 137 is because if you are looking at the, the superimposed picture of, of the storefront, the, the slushes that pass the hair. We wanted to give you the total actual, if I told you it was 10 foot, but then the letter stuck over an extra two feet, then you would have, it would, it wouldn't be the correct square footage. So we're going from point to point of, of the, of the graphic, not, not the pan. So the pan's actually a hair smaller width-wise than the graphic.
And the total size, the graphic and the pan, is 209?
Yes.
Thank you.
Just to confirm on the graphic panels, I think you said each one would be about 156 square feet?
148.5.
Forty-eight, okay. So you wouldn't need variances on the size of those, because just...
That's correct. We need the variance for...
For the size of the...
The quantity of the graphic panels, but not for the size. And we do need one for the size of the welcome sign.
And it looks like the, the graphic panels would be blue, black, and gray, basically, in colors?
Yes. I haven't gotten that for him, so it...
According to Sherwin-Williams, at least.
Yeah.
And just for the board's reference, I'm actually familiar with the printed vinyl that I think is being proposed here, and it holds up very well. I would say better than paint on a wall. It doesn't chip away. I'm familiar with a community in New York State, farther north of here, that has colder temperatures than you guys do, and they have similar thing that's held up for four or five years. They haven't touched it. So it's a nice, nice touch. On the hanging signs, what's the material on those? It looks like they're meant to emulate wood?
They are digitally printed wood. So it's actually not wood, but it'll look like wood.
Wood-esque, okay.
So...
Okay. Great. Do any of the board members have questions for the witness at this time?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm just wondering why Queen Pizza is different than the rest of the signs?
I...
The white background?
Yeah.
Okay, so the reason why is because Queen Pizza doesn't have good artwork that we can use right now. So this is like taking a picture. We just stole the logo off of the internet and clapped it on there.
All right, thanks.
Just so you would be able to see, but yeah, no, it would, it would follow suit.
Okay.
That's a good catch. That's a good catch.
Any other board members? Any members of the public have a question for this witness? All right. Please proceed.
And to briefly go through the engineer's review memorandum, per comment two, the applicant will agree, if, if the application is approved tonight, to provide a fully engineered final site plan that will include the correct signature blocks and the zoning as well. And for comment three, the applicant will also agree to post a performance bond and provide an as-built survey. I don't believe that there are any open questions remaining on the engineer's review or the planner's review. Just to provide a, a quick sum of, of the testimony you heard tonight, the applicant is proposing 12 hanging signs, one welcome wall sign, and eight graphic panel wall signs. The applicant is seeking variance relief from Section 430-287A of the Township Code, and those variances are to permit building signs on the side walls of the shopping center, where they are permitted only on the front wall, to permit a building sign of approximately 209 square feet, and that's the welcome sign, where a maximum of 150 square feet is permitted, to permit one additional building sign per tenant, as well as the welcome sign and the eight graphic panels, where only one sign per business is permitted, and to permit hanging signs within this district where they are otherwise not permitted. You heard testimony from the applicant and a representative of the sign company, and that testimony included that the proposed signage will be aesthetically pleasing, it will promote better traffic flow, it will help to unify the design theme, and it will enhance the existing shopping center, which are all in furtherance of the purposes set forth in the municipal land use law, the zoning ordinance, and the township's master plan. You also heard testimony that the shopping center is in a business district, it is surrounded by major highways and other commercial and retail uses, and that makes it unlikely that there, these improvements will cause a detriment to the surrounding properties. I open to the board for any, the public for any additional questions. At this time, the applicant, if there are no other questions, would ask for an approval of the amended site plan and bulk variance.
All right. Any questions or comments from the board at this time? All right, seeing none. Any questions or comments from the public? Okay, seeing none. I'll entertain a motion from the board. Oh, our normal motion maker is abstaining right now. Would somebody like to fill in?
I'll move.
To approve the application?
To approve the application.
I have no conditions, aside from our general set of conditions, which include compliance with the engineer's review letter, which you stated you will do. So, subject to only our usual set of conditions, your motion is to approve the application, if I understand.
That's correct. All right.
Second, Perellic.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion.
Yes, what's your motion, sir?
A motion to approve the, the application number 19:518 for federal realty, 1123 Route 46, Block 729, Lot 7, amended preliminary and final major site plan with C variance.
Okay.
I'm out of options.
I should, I should have closed the first motion first, right?
No, no, I, I think, I think, I, I think we had the motion. I think Mr. Mealy has further stated the motion well for us and clearly asked what it is we're voting on. So there you have it.
I, I think that makes sense.
We have a motion in a second. I think we need a vote.
All right. Roll call, please.
Before this young attorney has a heart attack over.
Mr. Perellic?
Yes.
Councilman D. Piero?
Yes.
Mr. Frigiri?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Mendel?
Yes.
Mr. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Vili?
Yes.
Chairman Von Aiken?
Yes.
Thank you, board. Thank you. Okay. Okay. All right. My attorney tells me he will be right back, and while he does that, I will call the next application, application number 20:504 Wawa Inc. at 350 New Road, Block 767, Lot 29.2, preliminary and final major site plan. Mr. Dinsmore is back with us?
I am back with you.
Very good.
Would you like me to...
We missed you.
I know.
I'll wait while we set up and...
That's fine. All right, I believe we're all set. Please proceed.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Werner with the law firm of Crime and Tuval, attorney for the applicant Wawa Inc. I'm sure you're all very familiar with this site, the existing Wawa food market and fueling station located at 350 New Road, Block 767, Lot 29.02. We are seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval tonight. We are not seeking any bulk variances or design waivers. What you will see in what I assume will be our rather quick presentation is we are simply proposing ADA improvements in order to render the site in compliance with current ADA standards. As I'm sure you know, ADA standards can change over time, and they have since changed since the site was originally built and the last time work was done to it. So I have one witness with me here tonight, and I will turn it over to him momentarily. But first, if I, you want to defer to your board planner, we have requested a number of waivers or submission waivers due to, again, the limited nature of the application.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the application deals with essentially parking lot striping, so there are no structural changes to the buildings or any change to use. So we recommended a number of variances. In terms of the DEP letter interpretation, there are wetlands on a portion of the property, but it's, it's not in the area where the proposed work is, and it's been previously disturbed. So we recommended a waiver from that checklist item. Similarly, with the natural features, waiver recommended on that, given that it's been previously developed, and a series of waivers, which I will not labor you on, related to the fact that there is no change to the building itself, no change to drainage patterns, no, no increase in impervious surfaces, et cetera. And then the last one, which is not in my memo, but the fact that they're asking for final and preliminary at the same time, a waiver was sought on providing the additional items required for a final major site plan. So we would recommend those waivers as well.
All right. The overall plan is really just changing the paint on the parking lots, that correct?
Essentially what you will hear in the, in the brief testimony.
All right. Very good. Any questions or comments from the board about the waivers? I'll accept a motion to approve the waivers as recommended.
So moved, Dinsmore.
Second?
Second, Hernandez.
All right. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perellic?
Yes.
Councilman D. Piero?
Yes.
Mr. Dinsmore?
Yes.
Mr. Frigiri?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Mendel?
Yes.
Mr. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Vili?
Yes.
Chairman Von, Von Aiken?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you. With that, I will introduce my first and only witness, Jordan Rizzo of Dynamic Engineering, if he could be sworn in.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear the testimony you're about to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Would you state and spell your name for the record, please?
Jordan Rizzo, R-I-C-Z-O.
And would you give the board the benefit of your qualification and experiences?
Sure. I'm a graduate of Rossiter University, got a science degree in civil engineering. I am a licensed professional engineer, including in Jersey. I'm a project manager at Dynamic Engineering Consultants, and I was involved in the design of this operation, as well as over 100 other ADA improvement applications for Wawa Incorporated.
Thank you. We would request at this time, Mr. Rizzo, be accepted as an expert in the field of civil engineering.
All right. Any objections from the board? All right, please proceed.
Mr. Rizzo, it looks like you have a board, and I don't know if you want to speak loudly while you orient the, the board with...
Sure. I mark this A1. It is an aerial map exhibit prepared by our office, Dynamic Engineering Consultants, and it is dated 2/24/2020. The orientation of the board, the north arrow is up, and there is New Road that runs west to east, and Edwards Road, which runs north to south. Would you be kind enough to mark this?
Yes, I believe you marked it in the top corner.
Excellent, okay. So the property address is 350 New Road. It is Block 767, Lot 29.02, and this is existing Wawa convenience store number 8302 with gas operation on site. And it is located in the limited industrial wholesale district, too.
Thank you. And, Mr. Rizzo, could you please walk the board through what we are proposing this evening? I believe you have what we'll mark as A2. Please note, this has been marked A2 in the top left corner. Could you just provide the details of the name of this plan?
Sure. This is site plan rendering. It's a colorized version of the site plan sheet that is prepared by our office, Dynamic Engineering Consultants, and it is dated 2/24/2020. We are proposing minor improvements on site to bring the site into ADA compliance. First thing that we're providing is a five-foot wide access aisle next to, next to the air pump, which is located on the southern corner of the site. It is an existing air pump. And the five-foot access aisle is provided to allow the compliance space needed between the vehicle and the air pump for ADA purposes, which is five feet. In providing this access aisle, we are reducing the number of stalls on site. Right now, there's 69, but there will be 68, which is 19 more than what the ordinance requires, which is 49 spaces. There was a comment in the engineering review letter about how the striping will be removed, and it will be grinded down, and then the new paint, the new striping will be painted. So the original striping won't be visible. And then there was another question regarding the lighting at the air pump. Because this is an existing stall, it was taken into consideration with the original design of the site, and the original design had some 0.7-foot candles at the air pump, which is sufficient with parking space and air pump. The two other improvements are both minor. We are taking existing ADA sign at an ADA stall and raising it to 60 inches, which is the minimum height requirement for a sign. And we are also increasing one of the ADA stalls from 94 inches to 96 inches, which is the minimum width requirement. We're not proposing any variances of waivers. The impervious coverage on site is not changing. It's 61%, whereas 70% is required, maximum 70%. And then there's one more question in the engineering review letter about the column wraps that we're showing on the plan. We show the column wraps so that both our office and the contractor can be cognizant of the width of the future column wraps, which will be in front of the store. It's a stone-wrapped column, which will be shown in the architectural plan, and we'll go into the building department for approval of that. It's really just to visualize the size of the future column.
Okay. And, Mr. Rizzo, just to clarify, you say the building permits. Is it correct that this store, along with many other Wawas throughout the state, are undergoing just exterior renovations, just to spruce them up?
That is correct.
And it's at that time that the exact details of the column wraps will be presented to the building department?
That's correct.
Okay. And are there any other comments in either the board engineer or the board planners' review letters, which you feel we can't comply with? I, I know there weren't many comments, but...
No, it's in the board planner's letter. I just wanted to note that I'm not aware of any protective provisions.
Thank you very much. Is there anything else you'd like to add?
That's it.
That is all I have for Mr. Rizzo, if the board has any questions or if the public.
Mr. Cagiano, since you referenced your report several times, any questions?
Yeah, no, he addressed the comments.
Very good. Ms. Vivate?
Yep.
All good?
Got it.
Any questions or comments from the board?
I was wasting time.
All right. And I believe you said you've presented everything?
We have.
Okay.
So the public has anything?
Any questions or comments from the public? All right. Well, then I'll entertain a motion.
We have some, please. I can make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
My motion that, that we approve, if I have this correct. I think this is my first time. Application number 20:504 Wawa Incorporated, located at 350 New Road, Block 767, Lot 29 dot 02, has a preliminary and final major site plan.
Second motion, Dinsmore.
All right. Let's take the roll down.
Mr. Perellic?
Yes.
Councilman D. Piero?
Yes.
Mr. Dinsmore?
Yes.
Mr. Frigiri?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Mendel?
Yes.
Mr. Mealy?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Patel.
Yes.
Ms. Vili.
Yes.
Chairman Von Aiken.
Yes.
Thank you very much, have a wonderful evening.
All right. We'll take a five-minute break, so at 8:25, we'll bring forward the next application, just so everybody can refresh themselves. All right? I'll see you all then.
This is the one where we got all the material at home, because we didn't bring it here tonight. That's right. Because we've seen it before, we've given all this stuff. This is what was...
Application 19:517, Morris Corporate Center 6, LLC, 10120 Cherry Hill Road, block 136, lots 45 and 76. Preliminary and final major site plan, this was carried from January 6th, 2020. You know, I think we'd like to get started with wherever you left off, but if you wouldn't mind providing a brief summary of where we left off.
Yes, I'd be happy to. First of all, my name is Kevin Coakley, I'm with Connaught Foley in Roseland. We represent the applicant, Morris Corporate Center 6. And, you know, it's funny, it's only been a month and a half ago, but I needed the transcript to go back and remember what went on, and maybe you have better memories than I do. But we started off the hearing with two of your major corporate citizens here, Ferring and UPS, or they're related entities, and they asked for more time to understand the application. And so between that time and now, we submitted them, gave them plans and explanations and had verbal communications with, particularly with Ferring. And so both of those companies have decided not to raise any objections to the application. So there are representatives of UPS here this evening, and I think that's what they would say if you wanted them to say it, but Ferring, I don't believe is in attendance, but they also have no problem with the application.
If I may, Mr. Coakley, since they indicated that they would like to provide some testimony, I would like to hear that that request is withdrawn. Is that the case, gentlemen?
Sure.
Call up front, please. One second. Will you state your names for the record and which company you're with?
Metherein Neon, M-E-I-L-L-O-N, Senior Director for Building and Engineering Systems for United Parcel Service.
And I am Frank Teklitz, T-E-K-L-I-T-S. I'm a Facilities Engineering Manager for UPS Building Systems Engineering.
Okay. And, Mr. Coakley, states that you have no testimony to provide, no comment to provide, is that the case tonight?
Yes.
That is correct. Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So then after that, we went forward with the testimony, we had three witnesses. First was Mr. Joe Fleming, who was the site engineer from PSNS, and Mr. Fleming, I think you may recall, said he wouldn't be here today, he had his knee replaced today, so we know he's not going to be here. But his colleague, Mr. Sevelli, is here. And then we also had the testimony from Mr. Gary Dean, who's a traffic consultant, and then finally Stuart Johnson, the architect from Menlo and Wasco. So you heard those three witnesses, the public had questions for certain of them, the board did as well, but they finished up their testimony at that time. Frankly, we have no further testimony to present. I would think in the normal course of things, the hearing would be open to the public at this point in time to make any comments regarding the application that they might have.
All right. I guess I'll start with the board at this time, though. Do any members of the board have any questions that maybe occurred to them in between the last meeting and today? All right. Seeing none, I will open it up to the public for questions or comments about this application.
Comments, really?
Comments.
Yeah. If you would be kind enough to speak into a microphone.
Sure.
How do you speak?
I'm Ted Margaret Collins, 60-year-old cherry hill road person.
For adjacent property owners to the project. Okay, first of all, if you had a concern on the survey, can I ask what is on the survey?
No, gentlemen, he isn't here today. He's hit. How are we...
Well, one of his colleagues is here, so if you have a question...
Are they under oath at this point?
Maybe.
These are...
Not on public comment, but certainly not a question.
Definitely not a question, but on public comment.
I don't know, I don't swear public comment.
You don't?
Yes.
Okay.
It's not testimony.
Okay, you had a concern that the...
The concern that there's... The fence along our property is from 1904.
Would you speak up, please?
Sir, we cannot hear you. The fence along our property adjoining lot 44 is in total disrepair and...
Is that fence on the MCC6 side, or is that in...
It's shared between us, I mean, it's...
Our southern...
But the thing is, the survey, the property lines don't tie in, so it doesn't tie into a filed map.
There's an older survey that was presented, since you're making forward stuff from back in the year 2000, I see in these files, there was a survey further back to 60, the fence was on the...
I need you to speak up, please.
We can't hear you.
Can you speak really directly into the microphone, it's hard.
Take it out, hold it. Yeah, there you go.
See, the question about the survey.
The survey showed fence on the property.
Isn't an updated file, a filed survey?
Right, and reconstruction people were using satellite systems to put markers, the word something, markers around ground, because they don't have any surveys back.
Look at you, Jim.
They brought them, they're not selling, it's the fence, previous estate, the property. And most other fire rebar's that were driven around are not properly surveyed, markers are not included in the study. This is...
All right, well, why don't we bring up our engineer and I do you can answer your question about the survey, and then we'll talk about the...
It's the old cherry hill road. So maybe they're here, they're here, and there's a fence here, that's it.
It says fence online, right there. Is it your map?
Does yours, do you know which one it is, there's the exhibits, do you have the stuff listed?
He has this...
Yeah.
He has the way down, I didn't get that.
Well, this one does show...
Sir, raise your right hand, please. Do you swear the testimony you're about to provide, the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Would you state and spell your name for the record, please?
Sure, it's Mark Sevelli, it's a W-I, that is Frank, B-L-L-I.
Perhaps answer their question for them?
Sure. I have our exhibit from a previous hearing with me.
Sure. What exhibit is it you're referring to?
The aerial exhibit is A2.
A2.
It's like my injury.
Okay.
I just wanted to clear which part.
I don't have this one here.
So it's at the northeast corner of the property in question?
If that's the one.
So we did provide an updated survey to the board as part of the application. It was performed in 2019. We also have, we also did also survey at the 65. I guess my question would be, you show a fence at the north end of your property, is that the one that's being referred to?
Is it possible if you would use the microphone, please?
Yeah, perhaps you could grab that microphone. I guess you don't have an easel here, huh?
I do.
Yeah, I might want to set that up.
Thank you, man.
Well, if the fence is in the right spot.
Yeah.
You're saying the fence is in the right spot. That's what I'm hearing.
We need all of them when they set up.
Clearly, what's presented here, this fence is definitely on the applicant's property. This one says it's online here, but it seems to vary a little bit here.
Sir, while you set stuff, if I may, can I ask what your concern about the fence is, just so I can maybe try to cut through this?
Yeah, as to improvements were made with the UPS site where the joint's lot 44, and whether or not there were any improvements to that property line between our properties. There's an existing fence there, and it's in total disrepair from 1904.
Okay, and so is it your concern that you don't know if it's your fence or their fence?
No, I know it's their fence. It was put up by a Dcosen.
Okay. So what is your hoping to accomplish here?
Just bringing it to their attention, hoping that it will be considered to be, you know, taken down at least once, just to...
How much fence is it, what are you talking about?
About 300, 330.
Chain length fence?
Really, you got one of the original chains. Some of it's been replaced by UPS, so...
But it's only 116 years old.
Pretty good, can run.
Whenever a bear gets loose in the neighborhood, please chase it over our property into the woods. It wasn't that big hole, which I don't really like.
Mr. Murray, there's two acres.
Down, stuck in the ground.
Only thing is, you're sneaking over here.
Yeah, you only, for recording purposes more than...
Right. So currently, we aren't proposing any improvements in that area of the property. Everything we're proposing is south of the entrance road that was constructed during UPS's development. I don't see the fence that you're speaking of showing on the survey, but it'll be up here along this line, which is 275 feet. I would have to discuss with the applicant if they're willing to take it down as part of the development.
Would you do that, please?
Sure.
Yeah, I think it's on the sheet that shows the wetlands.
Yeah, that's...
That's what we're looking at.
Yeah, we're looking at, it's one of one, the wetland delineation, wetlands of block 136, lots 44 and 76. You can see there's a post and wire fence.
Can you tell what property it's on?
It looks like it's on the applicant's property.
Yeah, this is the one that we're using. I'm sorry, 225.
Yeah, they just want to take it down?
What is the benefit of having the fence? Would it be better to take it down and get it out of the way?
It's probably better to have it replaced or repaired. According to the Interpace covenant, it runs with a deed from...
The microphone's back there.
These covenants run with the land unless they're released. I don't know that one possibly was released, but some of them are.
Most every one of those covenants has been released, I can tell you that.
This is for lot 44. I know for the upper lots, through different places, have been released.
In fact, I got the last one released about two months ago, so they're all released.
Well, the one that pertains to me, and I haven't released it, item number 15 of that covenant. What page is that on, the D book and page one?
D book, 2083, page 111.
Can you answer that?
Which one is that?
Item 15.
Would you read it for me?
Partie of the second part and part of the first part agree that it serves a mutual interest of cooperating in maintaining the highest standards of aesthetic value of premises and the property adjacent thereto.
And more adjacent there.
We think we're approving the premises.
Yes, you are.
Okay.
Speaking of the microphone, yes.
Specificity is in regards to the fence.
Go ahead.
Sure. So the applicant would be willing to remove the fence along the property line that you're speaking of as additional?
And what about some proper markers for the corners of your property, for the...
That's really not...
You know, as placing markers...
Yes, yeah, concrete monuments, you said.
Order that. Thank you.
So you removed the fence, but not replaced.
I might have some other questions.
Okay, it's just in the course of...
Microphone, please.
Oh, sorry.
There you go, there you go.
Through the years with, you know, the different projects SJP has had, we, you know, we're giving notice about freshwater, environmental protection. I understand this is for the two-year renewal, I assume everything is done to meet environmental standards?
Yep.
I'm just referring back to this.
Yeah, well, yeah, PSNS is their, Paul Sokloski and Sartor, is the engineering firm who did the flood hazard area permitting, and in connection with that, they, I believe they located wetlands, et cetera, and that's, should be up to date. Hopefully it is.
They had also, it's in a regional stormwater management plan, increasing infiltration is one of the recommendations, was to this site specific. I assume that's been addressed.
Yeah, were you here at the last hearing?
Yes.
Okay. Remember Mr. Fleming, who was, he was the guy with the bum knee?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, he testified a lot about that, and yes, that is, that was his testimony.
Okay. And has the height been addressed because it was previously just a 45-foot, it was allowed?
Would the covenant, the previous covenant that had a height restriction, how would the 45?
Has that been properly approved? I don't recall receiving anything for variance for a residence. I think it was previously for a parking garage?
Well, there was a prior approval for an office building that was, goes back to the mid-2005 era. So we believe that all of the covenants that apply to the property have been released, the use covenants and all the other height covenants and that sort of thing.
And being an adjointer, were not required to release?
Not if you, not unless your property was specifically part of the covenants, which you may be adjoining, that that doesn't mean you're subject to the covenants. I mean, I don't, I haven't looked at your property, but we've looked at all the properties, many properties that were subject to the covenants and...
But within the...
Within the park, within, I'll call it the park, yes, right. Within the Interpace holdings, I guess that was a good way to put it.
Okay. The only other concern I had was, I know they had mentioned taking down trees. How much is going to be taken down, is there going to be any buffer between our property and this?
Yeah, I think that's uncurved there, that shaded area. No, oh, right there.
Okay, so you're going to maintain wooded area between our property and...
So we are taking down some of the existing trees in this island area to the south of your property.
Okay.
But that'll be replaced with new trees along this whole edge, and we're actually going to be raising the grade there also, so it'll be more offered to your property.
Okay.
Which should be a benefit to you.
Now, when UPS was built, the Morris Corporate Center was going to be doing plenty of all along Upper Pond Road, but because that was part of the project, they required UPS to put in the access driveway all through there. But because that was part of the project, they required UPS to put in the access driveway all through there. I don't know if that planting, which was on the UPS site plans for Upper Pond Road, is going to be incorporated with this new build at 44, lot 44.
So any of the plantings that were put in with the construction of this road for UPS would remain? They're closer along the front edge of the road.
You're talking about existing plantings. Some of them were permitted, but designated on the plans for UPS.
That, that wouldn't be the designation for this applicant, though. That would be UPS.
Yeah, it looks like you're going to maintain the trees from here. Here's our property. Just so that I have some kind of buffer, so I don't see all the lights and everything.
So all the wooded area to the north of the road, that's all stayed?
That's pretty much the state?
That's all stayed.
I mean, not that the trees are in great condition, but it's still...
Are you doing any landscaping at all to the north and east of the road?
We are not.
So that, all of the landscape that is there now will remain?
Yes. If only to the south, so it will be replaced with more than is, that is there now.
There's a drainage ditch for overflow of water at, to the rear of our property that runs along the borderline between Meadowbrook Garden Apartments, that red line.
Yes.
Right in there between the road and that red line, there's a...
It's a wetland ditch.
Yeah.
So it captures runoff.
And there's parking that's going to extend into wetlands that they're going to fill in?
No.
No, because on a previous report, they said there was 3,000 square foot of wetland that was going to be filled in for parking lot.
The wetlands line was previously, under UPS's application, for Morris Corporate Center 6 was...
In what year?
2017. This, the proposed development is completely outside of the constitution.
That's the point, yeah.
It's not going to place there.
Thank you.
Is it real? No. We're actually increasing the buffer in this northwest area also.
No, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public at this time? Okay. Seeing no one come forward, I'll accept the motion.
Just had a quick question. I just want to make sure it's not lost, because I believe that there was some discussion at the last planning board meeting about outdoor recreation. And a couple of members were interested in recreation that was more applicable to adolescents than the top lot. I think a basketball court was mentioned as a possibility. Did you all go back and look at that?
We looked at, at that. And the problem with doing that on this site of the existing grades, and maybe you can elaborate on it, Mr. Seffeli.
So one of our goals was to minimize the disturbance on the property. There are significant steep slopes in all areas of the site surrounding the development area. So we were not looking to impact that. And then within the areas that we are clearing, there's still slopes just to catch up the grades and the retaining walls. It's really not a large, flat area for a safe basketball area. And the flattest area is also in the front yard, which would be desirable for activity like that.
Okay. Thanks. I just want to close the loop.
You have found the spot for the top lot, whoever?
Yes. Yeah, the top lot's a little smaller, and we can fit it closer to the parking areas. It'll be safe for all the users.
Okay.
All right. I think some guidance that I should allow you to summarize.
All right. Well, I think we presented a case. There are no variances. It is, conforms to the zone, and we asked the board to consider granting preliminary and final site plan approval without variances.
Okay. Any, any questions or comments from the board? Deliberation? All right. Seeing none, I'll accept... Oh, I'm losing my head right now.
Actually, before we go on, are there any, any items that we asked them to?
Is there a list?
Well, I don't believe there were, but I'm, Mr. Coakley, I'm saying, and board members, I was somewhat embarrassed. I was horrified today to open up my MCC Corporate Center 6 document to find it blank. So, Mr. Coakley, I'm going to ask that we, that it's subject to any conditions agreed upon during testimony. And I'll go through the transcript.
Right. I understand, yes. Subject to the testimony, yes. Yeah, there were a number of...
I mean, when we have the fence, we know that, that the fence will be removed.
Right. There are a number of matters set forth in the review letters, many of which we agreed to.
Sure. We understand the set of conditions that you apply with the various review letters, et cetera.
I believe you agreed to two charging, electric vehicle charging spaces in the last meeting.
Yes.
That'll show up in the transcript as well.
It was two per lot.
Two per building, I'm sorry.
Two per building, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Dinsmore, did that satisfy your concern?
That satisfies me, and I'd be happy to move that, subject to the agreed-upon conditions, that this board approves application number 19:517, Morris Corporate Center VI LLC, 101-20 Cherry Hill Road, block 136, lots 44 and 76. That we move that we grant preliminary and final major site plan.
Second, Mealy.
All right, we have a second?
Yes, Mealy.
All right. Let's call the roll.
Mr. Perelik.
Yes.
Councilman DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Dinsmore.
Yes.
Mr. Frigiri.
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez.
Yes.
Mr. Mendel.
Yes.
Mr. Mealy.
Yes.
Ms. Veely.
Yes.
Chairman Von Aken.
Yes.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all your courtesy.
All right. That concludes our agenda. We have a motion to conclude our meeting, to adjourn.
Second for Jerry.
Somebody needs to make a motion.
The first one or the second?
Motion made by Hernandez, second for Jerry.
Yeah, you go.
All in favor?
Aye.